From the example sa Bakalan, Bakalan primary school voting present to Bakalan elementary school.
Uh, we are not on the committee report, sir.
Honorable Chair, may I? Yes, before we proceed, committee report, can we have a photo with our VJ and personal? Please, our, our, thank you.
Can you call the VJ?
Yes.
Just go ahead.
Please, that can be back for. Okay, Mr. President, may we, uh, proceed with the committee report?
You're not on Ramon? You're not on Chao? You're not on Catalunya? You're not on Farida and Salas? Committee report. Committee report. Are you back? You're not on Bakchon? Yes, yes, committee report. Yes.
Honorable Chair, honorable President, I agree with this committee report number 383. From committee and appropriations. Subject. The subject is Municipal Development Council Resolution Number 5, Number 6, Number 7, and Number 8. Municipal Development Council Resolution Number 5, Series of 2021. A resolution endorsing development projects under 2022 Development Fund amounting to 69 million, 377,561, and 87 tabos. MDC Resolution Number 6, Series of 2021. A resolution endorsing the calendar year 2021 annual investment program amounting to 1 1 billion, 646,409,198, and 76 tabos. MDC Resolution Number 7, Series of 2021. Resolution, amending resolution number 3, Series of 2021, particularly the Barangay population from opening of Osminia Street Phase 1 to construction of Tanis Canal along San Tuy Street amounting to 200,000. And resolution number 8, Series of 2021, Resolution particularly the project under title 2021 Development Fund from rehabilitation of electrical wiring public market Row A to D to rehabilitation of electrical wiring public market Row A to B amounting to 1,746,169, and 82 tabos. Honorable Chair, Honorable President, the committee recommends that the approval of the following MDC resolutions, MDC Number 5. Resolution endorsing development project under 2021 Development Fund amounting to 6 69,377,561, and 87 tabos. Resolution Number 6. Endorsing the annual investment program amounting to 1 billion, 646,409,198, and 76 tabos. Municipal Development Council Resolution, and Series of 2021. Resolution, the resolution amending resolution number 3, Series of 2021, particularly titled of the Barangay project of Barangay population from opening of Osminia Street Phase 1 to construction of Tanis Canal along San Tuy Residence amounting to 200,000. And, and, the resolution number 8, Series of 2021. A resolution aman-amending resolution number 6, Series of 2020. Particularly the project title under 2021 Development Fund rehabilitation electrical wiring public market Row A to B to rehabilitation of electrical wiring public market Row A to B amounting to 1,746,169, and 82 tabos. Honorable Chair, that's all. And I move for the adoption of the committee report number 383. The committee have approbation.
The committee reports are handed by the honorable President, any comments? Objection?
Uh, can we be clarified with the population revision?
Hi, good, upon the adoption, then, um, the committee chair will, uh, pass a resolution for each. Okay. So that we go further discuss each, um, each, um, supplemental budget from the Barangay. Okay, any more, any objection? I think the motion is approved for the adoption of the committee report.
Sir?
Is separate, no, no, concept, among the approval.
Father, I move to pass a resolution declaring in full force and effect the MDC Resolution Number Number 5, Series of 2021. Resolution endorsing the development project under 2022 Development Fund amounting to 69 million, 377,561, and 87 tabos. I so move, honorable Chair. Resolution Number 5.
Seconded by the honorable President, any discussion?
Okay, I would like to be clarified because along San Tuy Residence, it has three corners. Tulog kanalan na dyan, ah, right?
Number 5. Number 5, number 5 ba nga tulog sa dito.
Number 4. Ah, okay. Si number 5 ba.
Any discussion?
Number 7.
Okay, okay. Uh, can we, the, uh, honorable Chair? Yes, uh, I'd like, yes, one, mga tala ng aning sulod, aning 69 million, kumusan ang mga priority project?
And did your father, honorable Chair?
Ano ay copy na?
Lati copy, ano? Lati copy yun, mga dalay.
Did your father, honorable Chair?
Ano ang 69 million, ako nasaan ang chat?
69 million, yeah.
Gulo na pininisa, two minutes?
Honorable Chair, the 60, the 69 million program includes the here. Again, mani. Gold opening Phase 2 at Puruk Baluno Paradise amounting to 200,000.
Will I read one, diba?
The aswan na lang, uh, impact project.
Yeah. Banker One.
The aswan na lang, uh, impact project, 5.6 million, total.
Yeah. Impact project, 5.6 million. Construction of Tanis Canal, Prok Maswag and Loretaway amounting to 3 million. Installation of Lord Tiles in vegetable section public market amounting to 2,494,075,40 tabos. Number 4, construction, paving market access road, West Side Access Road to San Monge City National Highway, the amount of 2 million. Construction of Loret, Loret Street, Loretaway along Resus Residence amounting to 1,000, uh, 1,800,000. Construction paving with Canal, Bankal Street, Epin Heights along Yeda Residence amounting to 2,500,000. Concrete paving of Concesa Street, Poplasion 38 meters, amounting to 500,000. Concrete paving, paving of Road, Don Andres N of A and Comner, Escanola School to Janshong National Highway, amounting to 5 million. Construction of Broadway Buluan, completion of View Park and rehabilitation of wooden plank into RC Slums amounting to 4 million. Installation of modular floating deck, Broadway Buluan, 1.5 million. Acquisition of quarry, amounting to 5 million. Construction of access road to housing project at Upper Pami, 3 million. Payment of loan amortization, 32,983,486, and 36 tabos. Here, multiple post building, Epin Central Center amounting to 69,377, and 561, and 87 tabos. There is any further question, honorable Chair, may request for the presence of the volunteer officer? Si ma kasplainan, si ma job. Si ma job.
Okay, now, sir, I think, uh, okay, now, okay, now, uh, moelato, uh, we just like to be uh, kanila, ng mga, can insisten, if you moelato, I'm ready. Any more discussion? Okay, acknowledging the presence of the honorable Juan Pablo. General Secretary Ramon?
Uh, the amount is so huge very big amount to work on the source, the time. As a 20%?
20% na, sir.
20% for the total budget.
For 2022.
Oh, yeah, for declaring the account, canan, we can talk ng annual budget. And perspective. Put it on and Danas, ano?
Mandan.
Danas? I will forget here, the annual budget. Do you want additional account?
Affirmate na.
Affirmate na.
What I believe?
Uh, yes.
Any more discussion? Any other matter? Any objection? I think the motion is approved.
Uh, lapon, so, please, sir? Uh, the total lato ng IDF is only 69 million?
20% na, 20% na.
Eh, kung 20% na, mayro, ano alam mo dito, 40 million gabi, ang 20% na, is more than 80 million?
Uh, may I? Yes, uh, yes. Ira lang.
Let us clarify things, so that everybody will understand, perhaps we have to identify kung asan source, I believe sa era, na siya, that is not the whole annual budget. Talking of the annual budget, it includes the local income plus era. 50% is coming from the era. Okay? Honorable Chair? Let me tell you. How great is the knowledge? Is the resolution, MDC Resolution Number 5 already approved?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I hear another resolution, honorable Chair? Thank you. Another resolution, Municipal Development Council Resolution Number 6. Series of 2021. Resolution endorsing the calendar year 2022 annual investment program amounting to 1 billion, 1 billion, 646,409,198, and 76 tabos. I so move on.
AIP, nani, sir?
AIP? This was reported, didn't?
Yes, yes, AIP.
AIP.
Okay, any second to the motion? For the project, ask this, matal, seconded by the honorable, uh, referee. Discussion? Any further discussion, queries, verification?
I think everybody see capital, annual investment plan, honorable Chair.
Okay, well, what's the pressure of the budget, would you like to discuss this further with the presence of Municipal Planning and Development Officer?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, para, ano siya ba, maisa na pagtapon ang Dr. BTP, ano budget 2020, ganun, ikanin siya, kasi marami siya ang una, so para attend to some changes, si isa na be approved.
Okay. Okay, so, the presence of Municipal Planning and Development Officer, engineer, ni Padi Potado. Okay, we're waiting for FPD. Can we have a discuss? Can we say something? Yeah, this is for five minutes.
This is, honorable Chair. Tapos, tapos, ang amount, ang, ang
Half na lang, simo, ilu mo, before, it's on intake of food. Tulog ka, lu, wala dud. Wala do like it.
Muster naman yung YouTube channel.
Alright, ini nagto-advise.
Nag nag-subscriber?
Subscriber na mi.
Okay, so, we are not back there, so honorable Chair.
Uh, since, uh, engineering Padi Potado is on there, I think he can, I, I think I can explain the AIP amounting to 1 billion, 646,409,198,76. Okay. Uh, the breakdown, sa tuang AIP, 2022 annual investment program. You have a copy review, diba, sa tuang annual budget 2022? Mati-kopya, diba? Ang total anatmia is, kanin, 458,000. 458,000, 458 million, 313,31. Tanawin annual budget. Wala siya. Kanin kasing, huh?
Local, eh.
No, 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 the local source. Ang ato, tibo, annual budget, na siguradong naipan. Kasi that's the era and the collection of income of the LGU EPL. Muna ginatawag na itong local source, deryo, mo na siyang 4 458 million, so yani 13,31. Magitan na to, na tanan dery. Ah, hindi ka breakdown, anak. Kasi, ginahangaan ka si mobuha, taong annual investment program, uh, regardless of naatay fund being source, na, uh, ana, uh, ginaiexpect na to, o wala. Ato ginasang iappear. Kasi, nakasubmit manatang mga profiles, ani, from the national agencies. So, bakati ay, ma-grants, sa tuwa, managiaapi na dery.
Outside source.
Oo, sa outside source, manang naapi na na siya sa 1.6. So, ang outside source, na total of 1 billion, 188 million, 095.89. Kumapantayan na to, diba, usahay during session na to, usahay naatay supplemental AIP. For example, katong low. For example, katong Barangay, 130, Barangay katungyong, 30 million, katong mental equipment, kabantay mo, nagbutangta, o pa-pas, katuplementary AIP na to, kasi wala na siya naapi dery. Okay, bago raman to, nigawas nga circular, so kanin siya, napasa na to, ni siya, na tanan kanin 1 point, uh, 1 billion, 188 iinclude na ni siya, ako, nakita na ko ni siya, maran, mga preview series, siguro, ganin, nawala pa, pero nakapasa ka sa national agencies morning na include dery, so, usahin breakdown. Ang kanin 1 billion, 615 million, is naan siya sa engineering services, tanan. Saka na to, ha, engineering. Ang problema lang alit kay mapita, kanin siya, oh, bilik kay na to makita, or, at one time. So, ako lang i- dictate. So, na ay 144 million. Concrete paving of Upper Pami Logan Bakalan Road. Affirmate dery, ang concreteing of FMR at Puruk Nara, Puruk Mangyong, Timalang, that's 15 million. Night opening, construction of road, Timalang Boundary Petite, 10 million. Concrete paving of road at Puruk Tubigan, bago silang Mauswag and Veterans Village, 10 million. Construction of road, 800 meters, at Puruk, bago silang market, Barangay Sanito, 10 million. Concreteing of road, Puruk Yang Dreamers, Puruk Malipayong, Tawoy, that's 3 million. Concrete paving of road at Barangay Tenan, 3 million. Concrete paving of road, 300 meters, at Barangay Labi, 4 million. Road opening, concreteing of Barangay Magdaok, Puruk Rikodo, Sitio Sarok Sarok, Sitio Time X, Bankerohan, Puruk Tatipunan. Si NRG, 6 kilometers, 100 million. Upgrading concrete paving of access road, Maasin, to Timalang, ito, sambong, kasi bugay, that's 52 million, 308. Upgrade concreteing paving of access road, Labi, to Donia Josefa, 114 million. Upgrade concrete paving of access road, Labi, to Maasin, 25 million. Upgrade concrete paving of access road, Bakalan, dumantan, 98 million. Tanagan siya. Upgrade concreteing paving of access road, Logan, ako nayaan, ako pwede siya makita, deryo, daw nakikitang kanin yung 53 million. Opening of access road, Donia Josefa, Tumitong EPL, 101 million. Installation of streetlights for diversion road, 60 million. Installation of streetlights for National Highway to the Colob, 89 million. Upgrade concrete paving of access road, Labi, to Donia Josefa, 114 million. Upgrade concrete paving access road, access road, Donia Josefa, to Tumitong, 101 million. Kung may nung duman konya, kaya may nung duman kasi na kuninduha, oh, kasi ako nagpasa ang resolution. Kanin installation of streetlights for diversion road, na 60 million, o 89 million. So, anything, nga, katong ginapasa na to, direct resolution endorsing to different national agencies for another, for sources, iappear na dery, manang tanawin yung 1 billion, pero kung kumuha na gino cash, kung pwede lang ginaipan, katurig dito sa 450 plus. Morag dito, 453 million, morag dila sa budget, ang sigurado nga, ma-implement for next year. Kaya mora maninai pundo. Kanin uban, kurang ni siya to, mga reimbursement na to. So, ang katong sobra, 38 million, dery, naasya sa tuang health services of agricultural services, so, may health services, dery. Maternal Newborn Child Health and Nutrition Program, 5 million. Non-communicable Disease Control and Prevention Program, 2 million. Family Program, Family Planning, 20,000, Adulterated Health. So, the total ni siya, 38 million, capin. So, ang tanaw na to, ano, anis siya iappear lang dery sa plano, iappear lang sa programa, pero kung figures, kanin ang naan na to.
Kaso, magbagit na, feeling na maginus, correct?
Tama. Kaya naano siya, dery, unless kung kulang ang figure. So, uh, anis, yung, palitan, diba, kasagaran kita, napasa, kaya't mga resolution, saka't mga iduso, o mga other projects. So, expected, dapat, naapi dery. Karoon, oo. Diba, itong mga, sa una panatong, magipagbuhan, expect na nga, dapat. Ako, nakita na ako, to, local resolution. Streetlights.
Any questions?
Ang taliyo po. Ang taliyo, ungoing construction sa connecting Maasin and Buluan, there is an ongoing construction, no? Connecting Ma, uh, Tumitong and Buluan, dada?
Tumitong.
Night funding, anak, i-open man nila.
Ah, magisat? Ah, magisat?
Ito sa, ulahan sa, Bagay din ang kapitan, dito. Gusto kayong sa ekspilahan sa Buluan?
Pasagi trabaho sa, ano?
Oo, na dyan, eh, pan Oo, tama, national. Manang usahay, uh, matinala lang tanga, na'y mga nagtubol, wala, kasi, bago kapalun, naadili mga profile, di ka na kinayor, manay 'yan ginainon nga. Phase 5, yun, yan, sinasa siya dahatang, manay siya. Naginapadalit-dalit na to, para yun.
Pagka-openin na na, dery, concreteing ba?
Pagka-openin na na siya, dery, opening and concreteing.
Wala na may planchik na, morning, sir?
Ah, concreteing, okay.
concreteing na?
Okay.
Okay, naman, any questions? Okay, wala na. Okay, uh, honorable, so you may proceed with your committee report after the presentation of the, uh, annual investment program.
MDC Resolution Number 6, sir.
MDC, uh, Resolution Number 6. Can you move for the approval, honorable, so?
Yes, honorable Chair. I move for the approval of MDC Resolution Number 6.
Seconded by the honorable referee. Discussion? Other than discussion? Objection, here now, the motion is approved.
Number Resolution, honorable Chair. Still, the Municipal Development Council Resolution Number 7. Series of 2021. Resolution amending, resolution number 3, Series of 2021. Particularly titled of Barangay Impact Project, Barangay Poplasion. From opening of Osminia Street Phase 1, to construction of Tanis Canal, along San Tuy Residence, amounting to 200,000. And endorsing the same, to the honorable men.
Okay, is a right to the motion.
To the honorable members of the San Mulyang Bayan for approval, I so move, honorable Chair, the document.
Seconded through the motion. Seconded by the honorable President. Discussion? There is?
Wala na.
Objection?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Is that the recommendation of the presentation, sir? Can you amend ba nila?
Aka.
No, no. Okay.
Ang pwede yung, wala pa dery, is, ha, the transfer, hindi mo kunin street. Along the residence of San Tuy, dyan, four corners, ba, three corners, dyan dyan, two corners, dala dyan. Ah, na bitito.
Okay. At ano 'yung suba, ni?
Okay, so, uh uh, honorable, lago, asan, ano yung gusto, ithrow na question? Si si Right Person, yung makatubak?
Strike yung, pa 'yung suba. Ika nila, hindi na. Ayun suba, dery, so.
Any exact location?
Abot, dyan. Um, but
They have the floor?
Yes.
How about you, sir?
Uh
Ah, I have, I was informed that there is an ongoing rehabilitation of the road. Concrete kamadya.
Concrete na.
From the Toyota deliverang.
Tanad na, muna, maling bridge. Kulang tanad din sa bawal.
So, concrete tires na sa dya, pero naa to di sila give development na. Tanad, surak tanad.
Tanad, tanad, muna 'yung tanad. Muna 'yung release tanad.
Practiced by the, by the provincial, peripravince.
I heard about that because the, katong, fansa atong pagmangtubito, guntad. Guntad. So, na, siguro, dito siguro at bang sa going to Bankerohan, tanad. Matapakan na, 200,000 na muna.
Actually, actually, sir, kanang, ginaingon pa rin na, 15 million, katunang kitang ang senator, talaga, di no?
Yeah.
Ah, siguro, kanang 200,000, muna ang gina bit na katubig, bituin la kahal.
Siguro, okay. Tanad ikan dito sa taas, ayaw nila sa Riverbank, that's 15 million. Aside from katong.
Bakal nito, sa, sa, naka pa. Sayang ba?
Sige na, kanina mga recommendation sa barangay council. Muna recommendation ni.
Yung na na recommendation.
And store, sir.
Okay, okay.
Kanang 30 million, duna ba, 30,000, duna ba, kabarin program na board, ah, muna, kasi mobuha, di dyan na 30,000. Decision for dyan na to.
Okay, okay. Okay, next question? Objection? Do you know the motion is see back?
Next?
Still, one more. Resolution, one more resolution from Municipal Development Council. Resolution number 8, series of 2021. Resolution, amending resolution number 6, series of 2020, particularly, particularly, electric power and the 2021 development fund, on rehabilitation of electrical wiring, public project Row A to B. For rehabilitation of electrical wiring, public market Row A to B, amounting to 1,746,169 pesos and 80 pesos tabos. I say move for the approval, Honorable Chair.
Okay, next question, General Board. Granted by the Honorable Chair. Question? Objection? Do you know the motion is see back? Honorable Chair? One more committee report, Honorable Chair. Last but not least.
Committee report, number 382. On the committee on appropriation and finance. Subject supplemental project number 1, for calendar 2021 of Ayon. Amounting to 775,429 pesos and 85 cents tabos. And barangay Logan, amounting to 150,5958 and 58 cents tabos. Supplemental budget number 2, for calendar year 2021 of barangay Lower Epi Heights, amounting to 300,133,559 pesos and 41 cents tabos. And barangay Bankerohan, the amount of 71,500. Remarks and recommendation, Honorable Chair. The committee on appropriation, to which was referred the supplemental budget number 1, calendar year 2021 of barangay Ayon, barangay Logan. Supplemental budget number 2, calendar year 2021 of barangay Lower Epi Heights, and barangay Bankerohan, this municipality for review, for decision approval. The said supplemental budget number 1, and supplemental budget number 2 has been referred to local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is shared by the cleared operative in its entirety, effective upon its approval, subject to the posting requirement under section 59 of Republic Act 7160, and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the idea must certain adherence of the fundamental principles enumerated in section 3 of 5 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited or inconsistent with the provision of laws. The committee hereby confirms for its approval, provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, budgeting, accounting, auditing rules and regulations. I move for the adoption of the committee report, Honorable Chair.
No, no, financial service.
Okay, next question? Okay, the question? Objection? Do you know the motion is see back?
I move to pass a resolution declaring in full force and effect the supplemental budget number 1, calendar year 2021 of barangay Ayon, barangay Logan, and supplemental budget number 2, calendar year 2021 of barangay Lower Epi Heights, and barangay Bankerohan. I say move, Honorable Chair. The approval.
Granted by, General Board, question? Amendment, objection, do you know the motion is see back? Okay, next committee report? Hapa?
That's all, Honorable Chair. Muna, tanan.
General Board?
Muna.
General Board, question?
Yes.
Patan ninyas na committee report? Okay, so, General Board, tanan?
No. Committee report number 385. Subject referred to the committee on health and reimbursement from the office of the municipal mayor. Requesting an approved resolution for financial assistance of COVID-19 death suspect in the amount of 15,000 pesos each to be paid to bill at a maximum home. One, Pedro Candelaria, Tuho Hailo Baynosa, Halye Naido, Tabacón, for Aralin Tesanos, Fragil Matingbola, and Six Bolero, Sabilio. Remarks and recommendations to committee upon verification with the office of the municipal health office. Hereby confess and verify that the adult main deceased persons are all COVID-19 death suspect and will pay for 15,000 yuan assistance each to be paid to bill at a maximum home funds to be taken from AICS. And more for the official of committee report 385, Honorable Chair.
Second to the motion, second to the vote. Question? Objection, do you know the motion is see back?
And more for a resolution advising the Honorable Mayor to extend financial assistance to the elderly deceased person, ah, the COVID-19 death suspect, Mr. Pedro Candelaria, Mr. Baynosa, Mr. Naido, Mrs. Tabacón, Mrs. Tesanos, Mrs. Kimbola, and Mrs. Sabilio. Funds to be taken from the AICS and to be paid to bill at a maximum home.
Second to the question, granted by General Board, question? Amendment, objection? Do you know the motion is see back?
That is, Honorable Chair, thank you.
Okay, so, General Board appearing. General Board Garcia. General Board Largo. I will, before, and then one committee report. Committee report. Submitted to the Committee on Rules, Audiences, Resolutions, and Public Ethics. Subject ordinance number 06, series of 2021 of barangay Buluan. Prohibiting the construction of any form of structures, houses, bodegas, bodegas, makeshift or shapes, stores, and other several building along and fronting the two sides and in front of the entrance. Concrete fish for reverberant, reverberant allowances, except for finishing purposes and government infrastructures of barangay Buluan, and providing penalty for any violation thereof. To the presiding officer, Honorable Chairman, the Committee on Rules, Audiences, Resolutions, and Public Ethics, to which was referred. The above mentioned subject matter of the ordinance has been settled, has thoroughly studied, decided, and has the honor to report it back to the office body with the recommendation that this said ordinance be declared in full force and in effect. I move for the adoption of this.
Second to the question? Granted by General Board.
General Board Chairman, yeah. Do you know the motion? Pass a resolution declaring this said ordinance in full force and in effect. Granted, please, General Board, question? There is? Amendment? Objection? Do you know the motion is see back?
No more? Okay, ah, General Board.
Okay, under business for the, Land of Business for second reading, we have one. An ordinance promoting the rights and welfare of daycare workers of those quality and providing for their qualification and funds for their benefits and incentives and support to preschool education programs thereof, sponsored by General Board, Chanti, and the other.
Okay, second to the vote.
Ako, Blap Town, alam.
Hello? Kung may gisidwa na kay Epi. Mamui bui na pa. Kadit lang ah, kadit lang. Naliran ni siya. Okay. Sige. Good noon everyone, good noon at ano. Bilik ko siya mag-on.
Alay ko sa may.
Alay ma ko.
Sa left side.
Na tanan, thank you. Good noon everyone. Ah, Republic Act 6972 mandates establishment of daycare center in every barangay, instituting therein a total development and protection of children program. It is recognized stage of childhood from birth to six years of age as a critical to development. Hence, daycare workers plays a central role in the promotion for growth and development of young children. The daycare workers are there to assist in keeping the children healthy to be part of the social services program, especially in the formation of heart and mind for young children in the barangay. The care service received by these children during the school period will significantly impact their learning capacity, creativity, and social interaction that will build and shape their personality to be the future young leaders in our society. At present, daycare workers only receive honorarium for their voluntary work. We offer her services with commitment and devotion to be the second parent of the young children in the barangay. They are responsible to maintain a safe and fun learning activities while the parents are working. They are our unsung children, childcare heroes. This ordinance would guarantee the rights of daycare workers to regularize their honorarium and benefits like fair health, incentives, and others such as uniform that will motivate them to improve their service and guarantee quality education for our young children. As of this moment, we have 44 daycare centers, and of course, it is managed by each daycare center, nasira isa ka daycare workers, so there are 44. In so far as honorarium, no, ilahang na ginatawat, ah, less than 1,000, I would like to read the barangays, na ay, less than 1,000 na ginatatang honorarium. Buluan, Kaparan, Domandan, Maasin, Maasin, 650 only. Suprema, and Upper Pami. So kung makita niyo ni siya na, automatic na no? Matama, kung discuss, umiyan pa ko. Ah, kung makita niyo, ah, sa maukod dinansan, naghatag taong minimum honorarium of 1,500 for each daycare worker. And that, this, this ordinance, and desire, any ordinance, that's why na siya, butang na tagali magminimum wage rate is, at least, mabutang time na, ato ang mga daycare workers would be college graduate. BEB, for lang, kasi pwede kasi siya high school graduate lang. That's why, kung makita niyo, mga honorarium is ginagmay siya. And naapod kayo na tawag na 6 daycare centers, nga according sa pagprofile, second time as WD, kulang good book support from even the barangay BLGU, and as well as BLG. Thank you.
Okay, so, may ask the committee to, can you move for the approval for second?
Ah, I move for the approval of this ordinance, the second reading.
Second.
Granted, discussion, please, the floor is open for deliberation. Again, please, General Board, in a period.
Ah, ako lang may i-discuss. Bugay namang gudin siyang ordinance na, ano, ipa-approved nato sa LFC. So nagawa sa'tong financial assistance, 'yung ordinance, so therefore, ako na siyang delete ang letter G and letter H, under incentives and benefits.
Okay, General Board, can you take?
Ang medical and funeral assistance.
Amendment by it is she.
May I, perhaps, if so?
Okay, go ahead, General Board, in a period.
Total how much are they receiving, artist, they can, ah, it says, they are denier of the shares?
Uh-uh, yes.
Total, the total, ah, the total, ah, this is, ilang na dawat, talaga, bula, how much from the barangay, from the municipal?
Ah, kung wala pa siyang ordinance, ah, makainuntan, ay, nainggit siya sa, especially the minimum, that's why i emphasize na ko kagana, naapag 'yung mga daycare workers na less than 1,000. But with this ordinance, butang na ko siya, ang minimum na ihatag in every daycare center is daycare workers at least 1,500.
Ah, yeah, appear na ba din nga, 2,000, that has a.
Muri CPO?
Special education fund?
Ah, according to Man Sepe, wala na siya, wala na siya i-g charged under SEF. Kanin siya tanan i-charge sa ato ang budget, regular budget.
I do not know, because for the past two years, they are receiving 2,000 from the special education fund.
Ah, wala, i-pang tang na to siya, wala na ni nag-iapil sa SEF, naano ni sa'tong regular budget, makadawat na sila 5,000 monthly from LGU EPL.
I do not know, yun sa'yo na pang tang, because that was a two. I fought for that for two years.
Ah, di, wala na siyang.
Last budget nila, last budget nila, there was an attempt from the district supervisor, you know, to, to start, the 200,000, the 2,000, but it was not approved by the board. It should approved by the board. Naitanip pa agit, meeting sa board, nagakita may of fund. Nakita may of fund. Because it is mandated sa new guidelines, na, ah, special education fund, can also be used for the nurse research. There's a guideline on that, on how to use the special education fund. So, wala na na tang sa, okay, ito 11, here, ilan ba't it's 11?
Sige, sige.
Kung sa'yo na dapat tawag, tawag, approve at the board.
Sige, matupang sa'yo, matupang ko, sige ka, esperita. Okay, doon, doon. Ah, akurya, curisy, na pasya sa SEF of 2,000. 4,000 na ginatawat curisy, babae, katungyong 5,000, sa'yo ginatawat 1,000, jinipin. babae, ato diya, man Sepe, sa ginagamit, one thousand twenty-two.
Why, why? If meetingan talaga sa board, because they have been receiving that for two, three years.
Did it according to time of inventory consent, approval of the board?
San, uh, tupag na lang ko siya no, so, ah, sige.
So, you mean that, uh, ang karoon, pito, ang sole budget from the LGU annual budget, uh, budget, wala na ang SEF na two thousand?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two na pa ha, for twenty-two na nga itong ginadiscuss.
Twenty-one, twenty-one sa'yo?
Na, uh, uh.
I do not know, but sa twenty-two, okay. Usually, ang, ang, um, depend on what, magsabit sila silang budget, eight, four, two, uh, twenty-two, ato na sa March. Mas ganun nga, I have been asking them to update the budget, no? Oo, koli, duraan sa budget, sa annual budget na to. Pero maabot ang ilan annual budget, March na, to, to next year, twenty-two. Isabit na nila sa volume of budget on the month of March. Well, I don't know why. Some objections?
Please, Madam Director. That you have approved this, so what will happen to the budget intended for the Special Education Fund from the SEF?
Okay, nasan ninyo i-putong question? Mister, ask, sir, the rest, do you prefer?
Tupag lakod ko.
Madam Director.
Koan, sa katong inyo ginadiscuss na gusak na donggan is thirty-two, for two years, so basically next twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-one. Kaya itong ginadiscuss, kaya itong twenty-two. Nasabitan po na, kung ano ibutang nila atong times sa seka fund, para delete po dumaan ka trace, sa kapila di ginadawat sa'tong daycare, diba? And considering na anong time increase because of the NTA sa mandanas, meron din, so ilan na lang ipot siguro gi, ano, gi, isa, po, po, I believe, I think, saka, God, ata ni tanan eh, gi pang, gi pang kuha nila. So, uh, right na, butang na pagdada siya pong no, kaso nakabasa, maguputupan, another advice guidelines for the utilization of SEF. So ginata makapangyay, makapasta resolution, asking, kung asa na ba ni, asa na ang budget for SEF, para makipita po sa ilang twenty-two, tas ilahang mga programs. Kasi naghanong, jodan, basahin ninyo ang mga advice guidelines na for the SEF na usage, baka pa po siya matabang. Especially karoon na, na ang mga modules, na napagdikontribusyon, baka pagka na mawala ang mga kontribusyon sa parents, gamitin ng SEF.
Basta, pero, manamit yan. Kung ang budget sa SEF na, na two thousand, first year to next, and fact then, buto nga specific only for two years?
Ah, sa kunisak na, dili na, ako di, di, nakanggat sa SEF. Pero sa kunisak na, para magbubu, budget pa sa annual, budgeting na to sa LGU, kung isa't hindi propose na to, mga sulid sa budget, isulid siya sa budget. So sa atong nasabitan sa explanation, iconstohan ka rita, na two years, na, may consell in farion, for two years, nakadawat sila. So ginapasa, ginapapropose siya kontinual ya.
That's right, because in the first year, as per a second number, we've been looking for.
Fund, correct, tumulog ang abot siya.
Nagita na 'yung fund to increase the honorarium of the daycare serves. Nakita na ko sa right time sa SEF, we need, eh, asang gabiton, to fund the daycare, the basic teachers. So, during the meeting of the board, you're coming up with a mayor, say sila 100% from two thousand to four thousand, so they're not sending four thousand for three years. But after the first year, there was an attempt, na ina di script. Oh, but I did not, I did not agree, yung ano, sa bit na kayo ng daycare, na dawat na sila two thousand, na walaon. Mabalik sila sa kabaya na kayo nga honorarium, so it was again approved. Next year, there was again an attempt, na ina na pong walaon, ay, put that, yung ano, that's it, dili na pwede walaon, duri kayo na, last year, big sig na, ginadawat per three thousand, wala, wala, na may fund. And it is authorized by law. So I cannot understand how, twenty-two, ganun, ganun walaon. Si correct na ng budget sa SEF, si balik na ng ano. Sir, may pasiglit na, mapili din siya walaon, sa SEF, or?
Ay, di siya wala.
Sir, Madam Director. Madam Director. Umiting sa education. I, I, put that, hindi ko gusto walaon. Okay, yun, what?
Based sa discussion, nagakarap kong paminawan na sa mga discussion, ngan naabot siya sa i-g charged na two thousand sa SEF, kasi nga wala hi-fund, dili na kaya, i-accomedy ni LGU, sa iyan siya ng fund. So nangita ka rin, bata, naano di mangana siya sa guideline, so pwede mo siya ibutang tutangsan, parareko daman sa guard karoon. So kung mabutang paminan na po, na lahi atong LG, lahi ito butay from sa guard, pwede itang tang na po na siya diha ang mga dawat sa ato ang, ano, PNSHW, panitaan na po na po, daram sa ano, sa general fund.
I would agree, Norbert Chairman. Kung tang tang na sa SEF, basta mamintay ng ilan.
Oo, kaya na diba siya?
At least, magdali lang.
Par sa nakaron.
So, okay, okay, basta, dili dudugos. Yeah, okay. Magi-matamay siya five thousand, may base, sa ordinance.
Basta mamintay. Regardless of resource, basta.
Basta, nintin siya.
Um, ang isang ano, okay, ang atong mandanas is only for three years. After two years, may taksidang i-kill, okay?
Nangita mo kay bahay.
Ah, di, design ka naman sa'tong LC or sa'tong Bali, inapasa, bata panitaan din na to siya, files to continue.
The ordinance.
The support of.
Okay, no discussion. Madam Director, sir, thank you. Uh, our application, uh, one percent time limit, there will be an increase, and here will increase, what, ten percent? What can you tell us about that?
Wala na, ah, ano siya, ang ako, ang idea mong gudami, five thousand is enough para sa counterpart sa LGU EPL. So it will be the time na, sa barangay, na siyang mag-increase, hand to, butang ibutang din nga na siya, si Lingba, hand to, maabot siya sa minimum wage, para makademand na karoon, ang barangay and the MSWD to hire a college graduate teacher.
So, the minimum requirement sa education, educational qualification, only high school graduate lang?
Karoon, yeah, that's why legal may good, kahit honorarium from the barangay. Maglang spelling paggani, so.
So, Madam Director, so kung ma, kwan na, i-crease na to, maximum, all is served here, dili na high school graduate lang.
Baka nga ito i require, nagyo, barangay i-campagne. For example nga, ang, ang, ang population receiving na siya seven thousand currently, so plus the five thousand of LGU EPL, next year, twelve thousand na siya.
So, sa population, kaya, seven thousand na mga ten months honorarium, we are managing, just, um, entitled to the ten percent increase. Sa population.
Dili na sila, ang tanaw niya, pwede siya dili, at least, dili mo siya pokorang talang, seven thousand plus the five, so, ba't naman siya sa minimum. Pero kung gusto sila na mataas, kahit ibutang naman akong at least minimum, ratio. Kasi kung gusto konsakto teacher, dili, taas, minimum, taga-honorarium, diba?
Yeah, no more discussion? Any other questions?
Please, sir, na council.
Okay, any other teacher, dili, daycare, four, 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 guys? Pila, 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 kubok siya, tama?
Forty-four.
Forty-four?
Uh-uh.
No more discussion? Amendment, please, amendment, katabong, give produce, anyone, uh, violation? Please, any objection? Have you heard the motion, Mr. President? Okay, can we move, uh?
Sure. But di, iba siya na?
Secret.
Secret, diba?
Repair and maintenance disaster response equipment. I understand this training. And another resolution, requesting this amount of PPE for the approval of the response plan utilization for the procurement of the following items. And then attachment. Will you let the officer from the NDR explain the request? I will put suspension on your role, Mr. Chair.
Good noon, hello. May I introduce to the members? So for our, um, here is resolution number eight, two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, under the seventy percent of the RRM fund, we have two hundred thousand, uh, travel expenses not utilized. So during the fourth quarter, uh, interim seat council meeting, uh, it was, uh, proposed, uh, uh, it transferred, um, fifty thousand to training and the one hundred fifty thousand for the repair and maintenance of our DRM equipment. So giving, uh, fifty thousand, ang atong training expenses na atay, uh, kasi tanan ka rin ng one hundred fifty thousand. And na atay, um, kami na training which is water, search and rescue, na iconduct ni sa ato ang cost guard for one week, no? Digid kami na training na, uh, pag-aapilan kami sa pulok mga barangays na platform areas, no? So we have identified, uh, Don Andres, population, Ditteran, Sanito, Lubertawai, and the Pangatapanghi, um, okay, ni Tuluan and Magdaog. So kasi, uh, kasi barangay may maginig ang ginabaha ng mga barangays. So mahimo na ang ato ang, um, training design, uh, approval new year, and kulangan manang atong one fifty thousand. So during the meeting, they proposed na madunaga, from the travel expenses, na fifty thousand para minimum two hundred thousand ang ato ang training expenses. For the repair and maintenance, nine hundred fifty, ang atong repair and maintenance, uh, sa atong disaster response and rescue equipment, like so, na bigsa, I think thirty-seven thousand ang napili. And the current presently ang atong duha ka ambulance, uh, nagubak. So na ato ang diya matanggol sa atong mutual pool, dator-dator ang gikinahanglan ng mga piyasa na palitunon. So with the proposal sa atong council members, they propose nila, uh, na transfer uta from our travel expenses, nine hundred fifty thousand para mapalitong mga piyasa, uh, alang sa ato ang, uh, dua ambulance sa karoon na nagubak na adha sa atong mutual pool. And for the next, resolution number nine, ang ato ang quick response fund which is ang atong treinta percent sa ato ang five percent GND fund, may sir, unutilize ng one point eight, uh, one million eight hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred fifty-five point seven fifty-five pesos. Kini siya, they propose only sa atong interim council members, uh, nautilize siya. So, uh, upon recommendations or proposals sa ato ang specialisatong health officer, nga bakal ngang gikinahanglan ng mga, uh, mga supplies, uh, kinahanglan ng tambal, aron mapanay ng atong response sa atong COVID. So with that, one point eight million plus, they propose kini ng, uh, one hundred seventy thousand for other medical and dental laboratory supplies. Palit, magpalita kita, uh, antigen kits, worth one hundred fifty thousand. So giving antigen kits, uh, okay, kasi barangay na good, no? Uh, ang ginamit ang doktora ng anti-genkit, uh, katong mga, uh, symptomatic na give ng mga suspect, big suspect. So, na ini-she explanation ano eh, hindi naman ko makahatag pero, uh, mga gikinahanglan na nato pinin mga antigen kits. And fifty thousand for our personal protective equipment, which is the PPE. Uh, magpalit kita ang katong blue, uh, ang kandidat ato five hundred percent pieces. So they proposed na magbalita one thousand pieces na, toga gamit ulat ko sa atong atong blue na PPE. Um, delete, magdelete tayo bukod ng mga response na to. So especially, karoon magresponse ang ato ang local disaster responders, nagagamit tao PPE. Kung mga ginipot ko na karoon sa taas. So, um, magamit ni atong puti, nga worth three hundred thousand capin, sayang tayong ato ang, sayang ganito PPE nga. Ginagamitan, dindelete na po na to my second, tungkol kay magkadugo na na. Na magkadugo na, so they propose na magpalita o katong, uh, blue na PPE. And another one is the drugs and medicines. Uh, they propose only dito na tungkol kay kulang na sila, uh, mga medicine especially, uh, tambal na pangsuporta katong sa atong COVID patients, so worth three hundred thousand. And they propose for sa ato ang, uh, municipal service and public officer, um, makahatag taong food packs sa ato ang mga victims last of land. Na mga barangays na, uh, napiktuhan dun, mga constituents nila na napiktuhan sa bahay. So they propose during the meeting, uh, at least makahatag tao ga food packs for that, uh, mga victim. So, na ini-she like this, and na ini-she like an computation, ngayon ako show four hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred. Now, I think one thousand families ni capin ang matandaan ni. And representation expense, food for our patients and frontliners. It's also na po ang ato ang, uh, allocation for our food para sa atong COVID nineteen patients and sa atong frontliners. So we guarantee five hundred thousand up to December. And also, tungkol kay ganito, na transportation every day, magatransporta, magatutubis, atong quarantine facilities, kada ano taga-request of fuel, sa atong vehicles. So gi-garinan, kama na lang putayon ang atong nabili ng fuel, so they propose only siya na magalit from thirty percent ng fuel eh, for our fuel, or nila mublikas expenses amounting to four hundred twenty-four thousand fifty-five pesos, presentin five centapos. So all in all, ang atong nabili ng ma- ng fuel eh, morning tangan, ang, uh, galit, uh, galitita, na ato ang, oh, dibadzitan ato for our fuel eh. Sir Chair. This is number two.
Signaling mo tangan siyo. I move for a resolution approving the revision from the, uh, from the seventy percent NDR atong fund, twenty twenty-one traveling expenses to...
Yeah, better. Let's get far as the business for today.
What about this?
And still move for the urgency of the... Solution. The urgency eh. If I approve or not eh?
I move for the urgency of this, uh...
Resolution.
Resolution, Sir Chair.
Second, second.
Okay, move for the resolution approving the revision of the seventy percent NDR M Fund twenty twenty-one, particularly traveling expenses to training expenses, for, uh, traveling expenses twenty thousand, to training expenses fifty thousand, and repair and maintenance disaster response equipment, one hundred fifty thousand.
Second. Question. Okay, one resolution.
The one.
Okay, for the discussion, objection, the one. Any more, the motion is here, please.
Okay, another resolution, Sir Chair. A resolution approving the quick response fund utilization for the procurement of the following items. So, mga balik, napaan na yan? Atanan ang inalay.
Second, honorable caperick, question. No more subjections, any more, the motion is here, please.
Sir Chair, other matters, Sir Chair? We've been in the process session. We have approved a MOA between the DNR, ENB, and LGU. And we have also passed a resolution giving the authority to sign the MOA. And if you... Uh, if you will read this, uh, request, there are two things that we have to approve, the MOA and the deed of donation. Because we are requesting for a one, one hundred square meter, uh, dedication along deed of donation. And what is lacking there is a resolution giving the authority to sign the deed of donation.
Okay, go ahead.
I saw, Mr. Chair.
Okay, second, second by the number nine, question. Objection, any more, the motion is here, please. Word, other matters? Mayoreos? Mayoneos? Naros Mayoneos. Man Yonson. Mayoreos. Ah, okay. Okay, nae, subti mong katuyoan.
Ang taga-kanaan, boss, may anta ko, hinabang ba kaya, kumaba upiran sa torto, kina Asay, po po. Then wala, may kuna, kuwarta, mga anta, mga anta bigtabang sa konsihan.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd recollect, any body from the staff, recollect ng ato, sir, besta.
Ato, sa pagalihan ng pogi, one.
Atan mo kitabog, eh?
Pogi, ano, po po.
Ma'am, na atan mo kitabog?
Pogi, amili alan.
Thank you.
Uh, eh, okay.
Oo.
Mayong, may starto, eh? Any other matters?
Sir Chair.
Any other, sir?
I'd like to, ano, there, uh, inquire as a, uh, captain of DTT. Kaya, I know is November nine, kinala siya is a business sa province. November nine.
Pass refer to the committee, boss. May, we ask the committee chair, atong referred same as atong DTT.
Captain DTT, November nine, ang deadline na sa province, submit na po. Parehasa mo sa barangay, ang may download. Wala.
Yes, sir.
November nine. Ang sa barangay ganito, pan, sa October ten, na may, ano, po.
Wala, a large deadline for the approval, November nine.
Some change it?
Yes. You call, take, take.
Oh, so, lahat siya, may request, ako si ma'li. Oh, lahat.
Okay, okay. Give privilege motion. Motion, eh, for this, privilege motion. Give recess.
Yes.
Okay, then, but I would like to declare recess for today.
Any other matters, katali ba? Ah, lag, lag.
Mayong, ato sa tangan noong, um, na atong delikanan kay, um, in behalf sa kong system, mga si Janjan, um, mga yata po of, kama nga, eh, amount. Kaya, sabihin ko niyang bill nga, one, uh, one point six million. Sa family hospital, by.
Artile?
Yes, by. It's a COVID. COVID.
Ah, COVID.
Di siya madala sa field health?
Di, 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 ano, ka lang, consti, three, three months pa da ang hospital. Ay, ano.
Artile, artile.
COVID? Yeah, just, two days.
One point six million?
Alas, one point seven.
Ah, sige, ato na, patabanan na eh.
Five to four years.
Si Alan? Kaya na, patabanan, na atay mapatabanan ng person.
Yeah, aside siya na, basi at, ma, 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 claim, basi at, ato po.
Oh, ako rin, ipapagawa.
Potay po, at, basic po de, ano, basic po de mangcover sa ato, ano siya, the assistance, kana? Or, po po, sa Monday.
One million?
At least, makataban po ba?
Yes, yes, yes.
At, tech, sa IP na inyo, hama?
Kamay ba IP? Yes, yes, com, sa IP ni Bay, ang laki is mitlahan siya, kaya kumangol, isuwan sa IP. Oh. For, uh, kumangol, com, non, ang laki is forty-one. Oo, oo. Ilan na positive po siya? Fascinated siya.
Fascinated.
Kumang, ano, ang laki, um, bali, did in part may ang laki. Baga eh.
Natekura, imo, po, pero, stop.
Yes, uh, yes, com, kaya, nagde-vent po siya. Hala, buka pa, pangitan na ni. Angalan na.
Oh, kanina, parang po, base, pwede siya ma-cover sa ato ang, oo, assistance. Oo, basta, i, buta na na to, na tagaipin din siya, ang laki, na, na, magkuha manood ka tong mga, mag, magkuha, kao, magkuha mong mga nongentara requirements, no, like certificate of emergency, dayo, ikuha, oo, re, ikuha din na to, na tagaipin siya. Ah, na, ha, kay, sama na sa requirement, mga, maka-avail, maka-avail, ano, ma'am, is tagaipin. And since, yang wife, yang partner is tagaipin, and to gaya na siguro sa na siya din eh, magkuha lang din ta nga, tagaipin siya. Ah, para, aside siya, eh, makuha, gaya sa kuwan, no, assistance nga ihatag, cash, maka-avita, maka-aventa sa atong assistance from the LGO.
Ma'am, ato, upon staff, mamatay na siyon details para mapatabanan ni Board Member, Frick, or Zara. Okay, session be of accord. Any other matters?
Any other matters?
General caperick. No more? proceed to the next.
General caperick. General caperick, and next, for the urgency matter, ba, mo, 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 sa, di ba? Di na.
What?
Huh? Ay, nado sa committee, so, na, la, oh.
Take out.
Take out, sir, committee.
Take out the committee. Prefer to send a committee.
If the deadline is, uh, this coming night? Is there a need for this Sunday and bayan to pass the resolution approving it?
Yes.
We approve it?
Yes.
We approve it?
We take out the committee. I'm afraid, I'm afraid, I'm afraid, must send a committee.
It was referred to my committee?
Yes.
But I was not able to call for a committee meeting because Sarali di man gudatong Monday.
Yes, sir.
So I was not informed na deadline, date, karoon nine. Date, na karoon?
Three.
Three, special session na ta, gudat, but not proposal.
Karoon siya, dapat na to.
Huh?
Sa basa-basa, ano mo po na lang, na?
So, I would, I would, uh, I would refer it back to someone somebody for the, uh, liberation, discussion.
Okay.
Comment on that particular measure.
Okay.
No? So, I would like to make a committee report for that purpose, no more committee meeting, kaya PTE na ka. Kaya nga to, that special meeting, na tara before night, special session, rather. Huh? Four is four. Right is five, six, seven, eight, Monday, nine, Tuesday. Deadline is Tuesday. Can we call for a special session on Friday? So that I can call for a committee meeting tomorrow, then Friday, special session, so it's the pressure of the body.
Uh, yeah. General. Yes, but, uh, Mr. Flora, you can see the, uh, their intent that we would like to have it, they would like to have it now for us to discuss. Since we still have a lot of time.
Uh, would somebody, would somebody move to take that referral from the committee concerned?
Okay, go ahead, General caperick.
I move to take out the said referrals.
From the committee of? From the committee of?
From the committee of, of the ordinance.
Okay, any second to the motions. Attendant, very well, yes, see, and discussion, objection, here in the motion is here, please. Okay.
We can remove out from the committee concern, no? And bring it to the, to the, what is called this? Committee of the whole.
Okay, Andy. Can you move for the approval?
So it's approved. So anybody who would like to move that this matter, eh, we'll say that as urgent matter, and we refer to the committee of the whole for immediate, uh, action.
So I move for the urgency.
Okay. Second to the motion. Attendant, very well, yes, see, discussion, objection, here in the motion is here, please.
And then you...
I move for the approval.
Move, move first, no? You move first for the one.
Committee of the whole.
You move first that, uh, this, this measure refer to the committee of the whole.
Okay. Convert this body to local vehicle.
And convert this body to a committee of the whole.
Ah, okay. Ina, another party. Okay, can you move? Ah, okay. Okay, can we move that this body be converted into? Second, attendant, very well, yes, see, discussion, objection, here in the motion is here, please. This body is now be converted to the committee of the whole. For the approval?
I move for the approval of the evolution transition plan twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four.
Second, attendant, very well, very well, yes, see, discussion. So it's now open for an inquiries, discussion of this, uh, evolution transition plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Okay, general capitalunya? Oh, okay. We have, any, ake gusto i-add, ake gusto i-discuss, sa DTP. Anything na ake add? Ake, diba, ake gusto i-dugang, ano eh?
Yes, ang katong ako ang request na, uh, concern, pinaka-concern ako is, ang katong sa, um, local shelter plan. Um, katong sa, say tawag, yes, katong na atay section from the mayor's office, nga na atay, kuwan na siya, uh, na atay, sa, uh, section from, section from mayor's office, no? Kaya nga nandun sa turisya, wala nang tayo o siya sa turisya, diba? Section na at siya. So, section lang, section, delete siya ordinance. Okay, it's in the first place, approved ng ordinance, twenty eleven, pa, naanatay ordinance, nga naanay section. And then, na, kung ano isang girepet, no, for how many times, nga, kinahanglan tayo na tunisia, wa, labi na karoon, nga, ang DIL jury June nine, no, sila mismo na, nagpili sa IP, nga hinuang, hinuang mobile municipality when it comes to implementing their new program sa bahay sa shelter planning. So basically, we have to comply sa requirement sa DILG, na kabaloan na si ma, Gemma, because the, the, patawag ni meeting last October four and five. So mura na ato ang hangyo, hangyo, nga ilapin na to siya sa, kanang, turisya? Evolution na to nga, plan, kay, ang implementation is next year. October to December is the planning, and then, para yaring po na to atong mga kinahanglanan, and by next year, kinahanglan, ma-implement dyan siya. Maula sa kay, imaginary June nine, di mo pagmobile municipality, niya, delete na to, delete na to ng meet, um, standards and requirements. So, niya, kapal man, proud po ayipan, nagingan na, naanatay housing projects, no, naanatay ordinance sa, sa housing. I'd like to correct. Mura, mura na po, concern.
Can you approve, okay, General caperick.
Please, ano, look into attachment number four, proposed modification to the LGO organizational structure. Makita na inyo diha ang proposal, soon sa mga positions na i-open for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four. So makita inyo gagmay lang ang pag-open sa twenty twenty-two because of the PS limitation. So mga priority, tanawanin niyo dito, kalaga na patag mo ordinancea nga, for proposal na nag-open o mga positions, so at least matubag. Tanawanin niyo dito, organizational structure, attachment number four. That time ang bigla ng himo o evolution plan, no? Wala ko, diba, na COVID to that time, but, um, niya, kanang, I was trying to reach out, wala man po, uh, wala nagtubag si Sir Dobby. Also, wala ko ikaw, wala ko yano. That's why, uh, kung saan may naanam na siya, wala man pa kapalog, kung kapalog, ha, diya, ba, naapeel ba na siya. So mura na po, ang concern. Mr. Chair, na as a delivery service chair under sa Housing and Home Site Regulation Office, na isa ka position created, Housing, Home, Home Site Regulation Officer Three, salary grade fifteen, ba niya, sixteen? Sixteen. Isa na nakapidyo, tanawanin niyo para, any, oh, attachment number four. Actually, gibasan ako na siya from one AM to five AM last Tuesday before the, ano, sumunod, pamunta na untsun ni makasat, maka-tubag, rapporto, ano eh? Aso, bago lang. Bago lang. Repay di tayo, pag ilapin niyo.
Okay, I think this copy was given to us last week. So, we would like to assume that each one of us has already, uh, let's over this, uh, plan. Okay. General, session?
Oh, eh, haven't given one week to read this, uh, plan.
General, sir, general, sir, sir, please.
Any other pet? I am, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I hope this, this can be addressed. Another one, caning, on local district rest, a disaster rest, reduction management services. My group. Like the, injury, then baka, tambong. Uh, suppose total personnel complement is ninety-eight. 50 to regular and 40 to job orders. Say brain, say brain. Do you really intend to fill up all these positions? The number of job orders is understandable. In fact, it might even be in the respect. When kilometers turn. Depending on the magnitude. But with 50 to regular employees for a unit, those activities are many in terms of kilometers. It seems the number is quite vast. What we must have done, though, during normal times, which are the longer period of the year. I suggest we review this more thoroughly and see if we can come up with more reasonable number. That is for general, so local disaster risk reduction management services. Number four. It is indicated that we still do not have three-day ordinance to assist them with public art thing one to one. So what ordinance is being proposed to support the unit and to enable them to perform their functions with? We will appreciate it very much if you can provide us with the full term for recognition initiative in update of such organizations. Three. There are three other programs, project activities that we might as a story are implemented. When do you intend to have all this in place? Considering that these are essentials for our fifteen agents of LDRRAS. My just are the three questions, the purpose for local disaster risk reduction management services. Okay, so, do you request the present? The present is about, in brief? Yeah, great. Do you need to say again? One lagi. Uh, all of those positions, I believe, do not be, do not be filled up in one time? They will be filled up as the need arises? It's not 2028, you fill it all the positions that are proposed there, I believe. That's not the way to set up the issues. I mean, it's a problem here. To fill up issues are necessary during time, with this method. But not to immediately open all the positions that are proposed there. That is what I understand, you know? For the preparing, I believe. So, there should be a star there. If, uh, you have the space there. So that anytime, the upper needs.
Uh, para hindi tal mag, ano no, maliwo, or, or, as it magfocus, i-focus na to ang, is that, especially no, sa mga PS na opening, i-focus na to 2022. Kasi kani 23 and 24, pwede pa sila change, kasi this is only the plan. Or compliance ba because of, uh, this mandanas, ano, devolution na to. So, i-focus na to 2022, kung, uh, kung, uh, uh, yun, yun, baka sa mga, you open the positions for 2022. Kasi kani, i-trace, agi po, ano man, approve na ngayon, mi, mayor, si tanaw na, go, go, yun. 2022 sa, so i-focus.
Okay, what's the, what are the purposes? For environmental, environmental and resources purposes? Why is, why is it that only that order will run? We have discarded workers and management. Those functions is a controller. And controller of all of the started matters of this office. Don't you consider this as a critical position? Number four. It is inherent that this unit is manned only by the mineral supported group team, that works. Why? Don't you consider this one of the more, more important units in the LGO? Considering other others, the quality of our products and the protection of our material resources, resources, our materials, materials content? I think remains very, very important. The present is the issue to, we can help, respect, respect, respected, and more active, uh, responsible.
Mr. Chair, sabi ko, cons, ang unang gi tanaw ka na karoon ma'gud, muna na siyang inventory na to. Unsa nga, naanatok karoon, that's why, dakuhan problema sa to menro, kasi, ang mga JO nga, ang nag, uh, ganito, the trabaho, so mga critical na mga responsibilities. So, muna siya, baka sa first pitch, baka the pitch may check. So, muna siyang pare. Tapos, ginasolve na to, siya, so kung gusto ni mo makita, kung unsa'y ito ang, baka tono or intervention on next year, na nito nakatanaw sa propose, organizational structure of sa cap, sa capde, oo.
Okay, maybe, uh, ang unang ginalang tayo is ang target.
Target, ano, to panatok.
Ay, mga proposal, eh, para sa next year, sa, para sa 2024. Another, ano, agricultural, eh, na, mga, suspect.
Oh, baka sa inventory, kasi kana tanaw, oo.
May, may, everything, huh?
Oo, and inventory ni una magpo, baka, identify the problem, for the, that's, may iba pang sa mga,
Proposal.
Oo, inventory na to, naanatok, so na to, for, intervention sa kami to, na may kanan ba rin na growing, for three years. Anto, katong kanang function sa lihat, sata sa national agencies, mauna na to in three years. This is one time. So, katong mga, one siguro, cons, mga comment, muna siyang naa karoon, di na hinay na to, so, for three years. Kay, mukha ni, namatay, limitation, so, ato pinaka-JO, muna nagtrabaho for the, na dapat ang ta-regular. Di, na, na, to, one time matubag, in, next year, kay, nalagay ta' limitation, so, in three years, di na, may, nalagay tubag. Pero si ma'am Lynn, naka-explain na siya para masaktan na to, unsa ng DTP o capde, kadaan talaga o, uh, overview. Ang pinakasimpli, one paragraph lang.
Okay, ma'am. I'd like to add this to present of, uh, our inspired episode, uh, Marilin Galienet, ma'am, and ma'am.
Di na, sa ina ng ma'am, sir, uh, okay. Para lang maliwanagan, what is devolution transition plan? Ang devolution transition plan, na kanan siya, daghang function. First chapter is, gitawag na to inventory. Meaning for inventory, uunsa existing na to mga organization. In terms of human resources, functionality, top compliments, muna existing na to, wala, para sa menro. Gamay lang ang regular, puro job order, puro utility, puro admin aid. That will not answer subfunctions and mandates sa menro. Kaya, ang iya productivity, ubo, muna inventory. The second part is the facing. Ang facing is ang katong mga devolved function sa national na i-assume sa local. Di tagaan ka sa national of three years, di hindi pa kaya i-assume in one year. 22, 23, 24. Matong, damatay ni ma'am Janji, focus ka sa 2022. Ang butang sa facing sa 2022, di ni, sa ayaw daghan, ang i-assume. Since, dito sa capacity development na to, isa ka issue atong na-identify is lack of technical personnel to do the function and mandate of the office. So, lisot si office, ma-assume dayon sa functions di hatap ng national, uwa lang siya itaw ng mulingo. For eso, diha, sa menro, ang ganyan i-assume lang sa, is our management, the forestry management. Kaya sa iyang budget, di ni kayo significant kanyang increase sa iyang proposal. Sa management lang sa, the pretender siya, para sa 2022, makahalo personnel by year 2023, ma-assume na luto niya, at least half sa mga idevolved na function. And then full sa 2024, para ready na iya ang structure. So, another phase, diha, sa devolution transition plan, is gitawag na to, capacity development agenda. Ansa na capacity development agenda? Diha, sa, katong dihin mo, workshop, na'tay one week preliminary, na'tay one week na actual workshop. We identify all issues and concerns sa LGO in terms of capacity. Uh, kulang ba training, kulang ba of knowledge, kulang ba of, uh, license, kulang ba tau, atsaka kulang mo. Kulang ba tau ng mga facilities, kulang ba tag sistema, sa to ang LGO, muna ang ito may identify. And then, kung na-identify na to, na'tay intervention. What are those intervention na, and what sa capacity development? Let's say, lack of technical personnel to do the function and mandate of the office. Muna intervention on the LGO is to hire. To hire technical positions to do anak na function. So, the 2022 since, atong allowable is only eight million limited. So, gi una, ang rule is, una'to ang mandatory, usa ang delete mandatory. So, usa'to mandatory, ang katong concern ni ma'am Dara is a housing. So, we created one position for housing. Sa menro, na delete, pwedeng di i-create, so we created three, I guess, three or four, di ako memorize. And then, sa, sa LDR, sir, we created one position kay, paro nun sa pandemic, kinahanglan with maugme, o technical. Kasi sa LDR, technical ang ilang trabaho, di lang pa pwedeng magbutang na JO without training. So, we need technical, at least isa. Sa zoning, which, ang ato ang problema on zoning, duga in na siya. Ato di siyang i-appeal kay, dako siya o, um, issue, sa to ang, pagkuha o income, no? Isa sa to ang, uh, strategy on revenue generation, ng may increased ang ato ang income. So, we need technical position and a zoning. And all other technical positions, like kanang sa biosystem or agricultural engineer sa agriculture. It's a mandate. Pwede siyang di i-create, pwede siyang designated, however, sa LGO, wala tay existing agricultural engineer. That's why we have to hire. Di man na to kaya ang tulog, isa lang sa, sa guard, maybe by 23, madugangan duha, or 24, madugangan o, ubay-ubay. So, yun na lang, capacity development agenda, kulat system, baryo sa legislature, existing na ang, uh, paperless. Pero, sa gino ni ma'am Lanay, ang problema, ang sustainability, ang, ang maintenance. So, we identify that as an issue, unsa ba ang maintenance? Na may program, system, maintenance, ginana yearly. So, para sa capde, kung makita mo ng mga figure diha, it's all, ang, ang, to ano na, ang amount is MOE. Sa capde, di liquidi ang mga infrastructure, wala tay intradihat, no? Puro na siya MOE, maintenance, kasi capacity development, in terms of leadership, in terms of management, in terms of manpower requirement, muna siya sa capacity development. Another phase is, ang proposed organizational staffing pattern. Muna yung ni Sir Bal, makita na to, bigang, kaya position diha. Those are ideal positions to be composed sa usaka office. Because an office should at least have two divisions, and every division should have at least two sections. Growing lang siya. Sa time nga na dito, di na ka magsee di of, create, 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 na wala sa growing. Mu pick up lang ta, unsa diha, na positions, ato i-create through plantilla ordinance. So, di di na siya buto sa buksan na na, ano diha, provide na to siya appropriation kanan. Yidid siya, impossible di siya, kuha lang ta, muna siya o, muna staffing pattern. Kuha ta, dayon, through an appropriation ordinance, and plantilla ordinance, muna siya maprobide an old fund. Next is the monitoring. Sa facing, nagbutang ka, unsa di assume sa year one, year two, year three. Sa monitoring, sa form seven, if you refer your copy, is an implementation na to, na kajin monitoring. Na, kung gitlang di mo siya anitak na ka, dapat naki timeline, January, February, March, unsa ang iya ang timeline sa implementation. Di ni, pwede, nagbutang ka na assume, pero wala kay di implement. So, diha sa monitoring, makita, if, ang atong gitlang, no, properly implemented ba. At the end of 2024, may evaluate sa national, ato bang na fully assume ang idevolved na function? Actually, naanatay devolved, di ba, year, kung devolved last time pa. Actually, ang health, o service, iyan ang na-assume. Ang problema no sa health is the supplies. Na dati si DOH ba procure, si LGO nakaroon of medicines and other logistics. But on service, si health na-assume na ginatanan. On social services, kulang kulang muna yang di facing, 22, 23, 24. So, mauna siya ang katibukan sa devolution transition plan. Una na inventory, ikaduhan na facing, itatulungo ang capacity development agenda. Ang itong part, muna na to proposed staffing, agenda, monitoring. That's all, sir.
Okay, klaro, sir? Clarob? Isa pre-workshop, kung sa workshop, nadistress, or, di, isakala?
Yes, sir. Naanat siya dito sa guidelines, na personnel di ni i-devolved. It's still the discretion of the local government unit ang pag-hire. So, na ay offer ang mga affected personnel sa national, affected sa devolution, na siya sa guidelines. Diha, peron sila early retirement, pwede transfer, mas daku ilang madawat. So, depende na po'y mga conditions, na within five years, dapat di ni sila ma-employ sa gobyerno, na siya sa guidelines, sir, I believe. So, di ni appeal ang employee adobe, it's only the function, basic services.
And I believe, at the table sa EDO, kay, maka-hair, matatag ang tao dire. So, sa employment, maka, hatag ang employment sa atong mga tao, kaya, i-devolved ang personnel, di ka sa taas, pansita. Dapat ang mga personnel coming from the EDO para maka-hair ta. Maka-employ ta.
What particular offices, sir?
Uh, mga officers affected the devolution is on health, um, MSWDO, agriculture, menro, engineering, engineering, five offices. Kaysa ang mga infrastructure projects, before, kanta sa DPWH, like mga roads, bridges, si LGO na. So, hinay-hinay, podsa siya. Dependre sa DTP, na nakaproob pod sa national, na maupo'y atong ikuha dari sa LGO. Na ay mga daghang projects, na dapat si DPWH before, si LGO nakaroon.
Yung, ang idevolved na, nahinga na din sila sa toong, kira is only on 100 billion, takit?
Yes, muna siya college, niya, ang 100.
Baka 100, 20% lang.
Wala, kasi muda ku, pod, ang 20, muda ku, ang 5, God, muda ku, pod, ang 5, na LDR. So, yun, sin-award na to mga concerns, ma-address sa man saksi, ay, madugang, napulat, 20, madugang, ang 5, ang God, ang 1%, senior, PWD, and jubilay.
Okay. Any more discussion? More discussion, amendment? Any objection? Do you need the motion is approved? Ma'am, thank you, ma'am. Bye. Okay, okay. Pag sa pag sa ano lang, usah sa, ano, DTP, usah karansion, sa capde, pag sa pag sa ano lang, pag sa solution. Okay, okay, sa panisa na lang, usa sa, DTP, usa sa resolution sa CACDEP, sa panisa na lang, resolution. Okay, next resolution sa CACDEP. May project po ba, sa CACDEP?
Time for the approval of capacity development agenda of LGU.
Thank you sir, granted by the general discussion. No na, objection, giving na the motion, miss Batut. Next year lang, mga third quarter, third quarter, next year, third quarter lang, next year. Sino na kabalik pa?
Ulan, maiba sa college, bagay, the master's.
Oo.
How about annual budget 2022? Reflect to committee on appropriation.
No, sir, let's go first.
Resolution na diha ta'. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, General. I think we have proposed annual budget now.
Refer me sir, sir, refer me sir, please, correct sir. Well, sir. General, back from committee and, register to the train already, or you need to. Granted, sir, any discussion, any discussion, objection, giving na the motion, miss Batut. May project na? Amendment, would you go?
I am check or a chance, right, right. Uh, caning, ato poster ban, wala po siya na desisyonal nga i approve, wala po siya nagtutup, run it, ata, dun, yung si mayor na wala. Na appeal niya di re sa 2022, pero according to ma'am Lynn, ang na, na, si PD, hindi na, wala, nila na apilan of one year ang ilahang JO. Caning treat on to, a figure ka budget sa lang JO. Umakita po niyo, ato atanan, atong budget sa legislative, funded sa for twelve months, yun. Kanan na tong di pa ngayo, nabu funded siya, nadugangan, again, postervan pa.
Thank you.
We're not clear on the game. Budget na sa ano, budget, okay. Ang ato ang budget for 2022, muksa na siya ang i-prioritize sa 2022 sa ato ang mga interventions na dihimo sa capacity development agenda. Datong atong dihit, butan na hiring of technical personnel, na atay mga positions be proposed, pero four ordinance sa pato sa uh, sa Goyang Bayan, wala pa na siya na budget na diha. Muhulat sa top four, an ordinance creating atong a position, no? In terms of training, travel, mula siya ang ato ang na identify sa CACDEP, datong mga lack of knowledge, lack of technical expertise, lack of trainings on leadership, trainings on, yung mga needed sa every office, ganan amount diha sa CACDEP. Maupuna siya ang amount sa mga travels and training appropriated sa budget year 2022. And for those five offices na affected sa devolution, yung iyong na tao ng copy, sila ang na ay significant increase sa ato ang budget sa 2022. All the offices status quo, sila sa 2020, be status quo na to, since wala may affected sa ilahang uh, programa. Only those five offices, the health, MSWDO, Mendo, agriculture, and engineering. Uh, naanan di ko ihang, uh, nasayuk di ko, uh, my apology, nasayuk, wala, di ko ma-review ang budget sa sanggoy ang bayan. Naaman dito si sir Flarido, ato si ma'am Farida, buhing saksi good during the time. Nagipananghig na to, ang iyong hang poster ban, who approved back ang mayor. Reino si mayor, hangyo si mayor na, ayaw lang sa, since ang executive wala man sa, naanan na tay bus, na i-donated ng mini bus, kaya ng ato ang purpose is ang pagfarey-gari padalung sa new municipal hall, o pag-community visit in Barangay, naanan tay mini bus nga magamit. And another reason is, maglisa tak, say mo, uh, angkun sa MR na mawat-an o ta', vice mayor. And then yawa talapu dun ta', ang kanang source, di kuha na, kuha di na muna sa source, sa budget, sa JO, sa mayor's office. Kaya iyong na tawon na iyong budget sa legislative, provided January to December, ang sweldo sa contract, and JO nga, nag-icrease na ta' from two sixty-five to three hundred sixteen per dollar, uh, minimum wage. So, datok yud siya o kaunod. While sa executive, mo, abog lang siya with that budget until two March, one quarter lang di ba niya kaigo. So kung madugang ng three point something, madaga na siya o mga four months ang iya hang idagan sa sweldo. But dependo na siya, considering, assuming na nga, ang number of JOs this year will still be renewed next year. No, kana shala assumption sa number of JOs. So, all the rest na provided sa budget is status quo ang other offices. Only those five offices, na na atay mga concerns sa construction, na atay concerns sa health, sa medicine, the procurement on medicines and other logistics sa LGU na, late na si national. All services, the same. Si MS, kita na ang nag-assume sa uh, supplemental feeding. So, ang be proposed na five million is too big for supplemental feeding, di divide na to, two five, sa two million, but are two point five, di ba ako memorize. Sa LGU, ang katungga si Barangay. So that's why last week, we conducted a budget forum sa Barangay, para ang budget sa LGU o budget sa Barangay ma-aline. Muna sa pong programa di implement ni LGU, mausay di butang programa sa barangay, like supplemental feeding. Do this LGU, maugmet si barangay. Or uh, drug clearing, na atay mada, si barangay na ay bada. And be provide ni LGU, iugmet ni barangay. And all other programs nga be provide ni LGU, provide ni barangay, para ma-maximize na to ang atong resource.
Any more, for the approval?
I move for the approval of annual budget 2022.
Sir, granted, granted by the general, no na na panis discussion? Amendment, uh, there any objection? You have been on the motion, miss Batut.
Sir, I'll clarify, datong three million, i, i, ikuha to siya, with the accessory.
Ma'am, ma'am, pana tayo, ganun ta' supplemental mga.
Yes sir, mahitat ta', mahitat ta'. Mga pinan na siyang sa PCL nga year end.
One hundred eighty thousand, naman ang, ang training, fifteen thousand, naman daw, fifteen thousand times twelve, that's one hundred eighty thousand. Wala niyo na on naaraan, yung travel expense.
Ang travel, pero, oo, may oranda ka computation, para at least makabalukuha sa mga. Ang training, ang training, ang legislation is six seven duna. Uh, ang travel, ang road kay, asa ba, sa buo, ang per diya, kilan naman i two thousand, two thousand, la, kilakadays.
Parte?
Two, two, three, wala, or then, um, per diya, ang, ang budget o, ang tiket bang wall, wala. Two, four, six, seven, eight, uh, let's say, uh, ang tiket, four, four. Under twelve or thirteen inch. Ang ulat na fifteen na lang. Uh, rock estimate. So, uh, ang tiket, siguro, uh, one way kay, katong last, per diya, na to is na sa mga, almost four. Let's just say four times two, kay, eight and four. So, eight, tapos, ang katong, sa per diya, ako na, icompedit, three days lang, six. So, let's just say, what?
Suggestion, six, seven, eight.
Five, bato? Five, so, let's just say two times five, two times five days, so ten. Tapos, um, ano sa tayong mga, katong sanan, three, oh, sa tayong mga, other, ano pa? See, oo, mga, na na, di mo na kuha, one, okay. Wala na, tanang. Sir, uh, ang, 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 rinong nito sa ano is, chargeable, um, swab, sa travel, travel expense, hindi sa training. Chargeable. Ay, di, siguro, suggest lang ko nga, pwede, kadaan ito biwiga may para, dili na po sa mga, sa mga retards. Uh, caning siya man, good, actually, di open na na kami sa ilahad, just to inform everyone na, ang regional PCL, magconduct sila o, um, assembly sa Sebo kalong first week sa kuwan, December. It is by request, sa tanang province test, with the region. Ay, ay, ako, ako, just, kuwan na ha, most sorry ang dito pinoon. So, tabay na maggoodahan, actually, um, as a regional officer, atong bitangkanan among president na, ganang, sa um, municipality, dili ibid ko ta', pasali, kay, di sa naku, kay, wala, wala man i-budget na, yun, aralin ko. And, di open na nga pa sa tanan, kung interesado sila, ano.
Pwede matan ang vice mayor, ano?
Appel ang vice mayor at the sepetal, and even the staff, nag i-appel, kay, one, ganang, you know. Na, dali na siya sa qual, di, provide siya sa qual, ang first agency, ano ng group? First week sa December, most probably, eh, kinahanglan man daw is within the week, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Substantial November.
Oo, okay.
Mix yun lang, para maconfix ato ang organization.
Next year. Oo, uh, aircon, alaman.
Ibid pa man siya sa eleven, dubay pa ang aircon, mga two months na dyan na. So, ako ah, you, ganon ako sa tanan, kung nainteresado, ita to the body to request for funding. Taga ilan i-computation, kuwan beton, di pa kuha, kuwan, di change lagi ang initial plan, di change yet.
Okay ma'am, thank you ma'am.
Sir, mga yu na ni, oo, ganang request, oo, with a computation, para kabaloob yung tila. And ma'am Chan, nakikonservay ang planning regarding ato mga identified projects sa barangay. Isa dito magod ang na-change kang. Publasyon.
Na ano tayong na, ang wala na.
I-appel, oo, kasi si publasyon na nakabutang sa budget, katong first niya i-identify na project. Then sa AIP, iyahang nagbutang katong iyahang changes na, so dili consistent karon si budget of si AIP. O mga yu di ko may pasailo na ang amuang delay, tumo diyo sa DTP o CACDEP, no, pila di ka mula na mua pahapag. Bago ang budget o, um, planning, muna ng duangan si planning o si budget, it's supposed to be si planning mauna. No, yadi man tagal si planning, o di mahuman si DTP o si CACDEP.
I'm, uh, I, yes, yes, and behalf sa legislative, napasalamat kayo ni ma'am sa the seven million increase. Kabaloob ang gan, nurotaan sa health and, um, MSWD. So, caning seven millions ako di tiya na sacrifice, na sacrifice, para lang mahatag sa legislative ang ilahang, ang amuang, mga demand, salamat kayo.
Thank you, sir, ma'am.
Okay ma'am, adamat, ma'am, thank you ma'am.
Adamat, ano yung voting, na kuy konser, caning, kaya tiya sa Funda and, uh, the World Street. Ang contractor, kung pwede maconnoto attention through the municipal engineer.
LGI pay patent na?
No, no, katong kam, talentino, katong national na siya patent. Um, kaya, wala, dili na kaya ang implementation duwag ka yun. Maunet ko, o, kuwan, kating din ha, sa muang, kaya, sige ang unan, and then hindi na kay lang kabaho. Uh, kung pwede ma. Ma, invite na to ang ato ang, municipal engineer, kaya, and then ako siya magpo na dito inspection, mula ang contractor.
Karoon, or?
Uh, on the next session, na la, uh, honorable chief, special contractor board.
Mapaglang, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Pwede man taka pasuris na sa ano, kasi, dili man, mo ang di re ang approval, diba, sa SEF, para makita na unta ta'. Sa ang utilization, dapat, tangan na magpo na pa school board, pwede ko? Pag na nanamang, muna na ko, ay, wala ko. No, pa-furnish, na tagapi, or? Uh, sa budget sa SEF, ba utilization sa SEF?
Agusto mo magay?
Oo, oo, oo.
Passa ba, passa ba?
Passa, na pa resolution, kapi.
Kapi.
Oo, okay, pa-pass ko resolution, as, to furnish this body of the SEF utilization, as well as, uh, pag-budgeting nila for SEF 2022.
Okay, second, the motion, second, discussion, address, guy. Chairman sa board.
Chairman sa board, sa local school board.
Okay, mayor. Any more discussion? Objection, here na, the motion, miss Batut. General, may ka? Okay, let's motion for the general.
Second.
Second, by the general, the, the regulation is not here.
Parang po ka'tong pidyan, dini.
Second.